Mayor Johnston.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wyrick. Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
You'll all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Hand over your hearts. I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. Our, we have one presentation. Pardon me. Sorry. Welcome, everybody. We have a presentation from our Fire Chief. What, the annual report? Is that what?
Yes.
Norm Plot.
Thank you very much, Mayor Johnston, distinguished members of the City Council, City Manager, Sheriff Freihoff, and Council, Norm Plot, with Ventura County Fire Department, West County Operations. And what I'd like to do is to review the analysis of the last year's report with Ventura County Fire Department. Before I do, I'd like to take a moment to introduce a member of our team that's also a city resident. And I'd like to take a moment to introduce Celine Mooney. And Celine is our fire planner for the County Fire Department. And Celine, if you just want to just quickly just give a brief, just a little bit about yourself and...
Hello.
Hi. I didn't know we planned the fires, but that's great.
So, my name is Celine Mooney, and I am a resident at Ojai. I worked for the Los Padres National Forest for about 16 years prior to coming here. And I've been here since June. I work with fire safe councils and community members on hazards, fire hazards around their homes and within the community, and I look forward to working with you all.
Okay, welcome, a belated welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Celine. One of the things we're working with is to get a chipper day in the city of Ojai, working with City Manager for this year, for the residents. So, we had it in the Upper Ojai last year, and we thought it would be a good thing to work with the fire safe council to get it in the city of Ojai this year. So, with that, just a little bit of quick update. We had the recent floods event on Friday. We was working with Sheriff Freihoff, and at the height of that, we ended up having, we brought back an extra engine company. We went into a Plan Two flooding. We, at one time, had six engine companies, an extra utility, and a flood task force, all in the Ojai Valley handling calls. And it's still at that pace. We still ended up having five calls impending at one time. So, they were, there was a lot of things going on with the, with the event of the rains, but nobody got seriously hurt here. And all the calls were answered expeditiously. We worked side by side with the Sheriff's Department. And I really want to give a shout out to the city staff. One of the things that both engine companies within the city talked about was the city staff, how quick they were to be there, help them unplug drains, and just be there. So, I just want to thank city staff for, in the Public Works Department, for a great job. So, thank you. So, with that, what I'd like to do is just go over quickly, just a recap of last year's We, we had a change of, we actually decreased the number of calls we had in the city of Ojai last year by 3.9 percent. Medical calls making up 73 percent of our call volume in 2016 and 72 percent in 2015. Here's a graph showing the, the calls going back to 2013, and, and shows a little bit of decrease in the amount of calls that we responded to last year. Here's a breakdown of what it looks like comparing years 2015 and 16 with the call load, the volumes, and the types of calls, all being fire, rescue, public service, alarms, hazardous conditions, and the greatest amount of calls in the medical response at 72 percent. And these are the other calls by type in comparison with the city of Ojai and the county of Ventura at large. Over here is the, the calls that, the call types on the medicals. The highest amount was for traffic collisions, followed by sick persons is the call types that we responded to. Here's a look at where some of these calls are generated, these being the medical calls. And you can see the demographics of where they happen, within the city boundaries. These are the areas where we had the fires within the city of Ojai. These, I believe, are the public service calls. And these are where the traffic, it's a little bit hard to see there, but that's where the traffic accidents occurred within the city. Over here are the public service calls, where they, where they occur within the city. Those public service calls can be anything from a snake to tree down to hazardous conditions, flooding calls, that sort of thing. One of the big things that happened on March 14th of last year is Engine 21 was upgraded to a paramedic engine, which is a, a great increase in service to the citizens of the Ojai Valley. One of the things that we looked at is we studied the call data. We looked at our data where the calls were happening, and we found out that Ojai was one of those areas where, you know, we just had a higher call volume and the need for paramedic service, after looking at the data, was, was an area that we needed to improve on. So, and one of the things that, that you do when you upgrade services, it takes a partnership. So, right here is the partnership. Looking to the left is Supervisor Bennett's office was there. We worked with Lifeline, Steve Frank, partnership with our private company. We worked with the city. To the right of that is Fire Chief Mark Lorenzen, and then Steve Carroll with the MSA Agency, working together to, to find a solution and upgrade the service within the city of Ojai. One of the things, this is the new Rosenbauer engine that's being built in, in South Dakota, near Jones, South Dakota, if you want to look at your map. But for those that don't know Jones, it's near Sioux Falls. This engine is going to be in service toward the end of the year. It's the latest and greatest in technology. I met with the shop folks today, and they said that it has one of the cleanest burning Cummings engine on the market today. So, city of Ojai will have the latest technology with the cleanest burning diesel engine that money can buy in today's market. So, it'll go down the road without any smoke. It'll, it's, has the latest technology that, that's on the market. And this was at Firehouse World. I know it says 34, but that's what Medic Engine 21 will look like when it's delivered and when you see it running down the city streets later, later this year. So, that's the, the finished product. One of the things is I know the city has been concerned, as we are, about water and water use. So, one of the things, this is, if you see over there, 21, this is Engine 21, and this is our firefighters, and we're trying out a new technology. The new technology is called a pump pod. And, you know, one of the things that, like the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, we need to train with what we do. Well, it's harder to, we don't want to be wasting that water. So, what we've done is we initiated in this new technology called a pump pod, so that the water is recirculated, and we can use, test our engineers. They can pump, we can squirt water, and it squirts it right back in through a dead man, through the, the pump nozzle right there, and just gets recirculated. And that way, there's no water waste, wasted. So, it just gets reused over and over. Right now, if you were going down the 101 and was going by state beaches, we're actually doing our testing right there, and they were using the pump pods out there. So, the testing's going on, and the water's being reused, and nothing's being wasted. I bring this up as my final slide, and the reason why I wanted to show you this is that we like to think in Ventura County, we get it right. And so, this slide detects the amount, or shows you the amount of homes lost due to wildfire from 1999 to 2009. And if you, it might be kind of hard to see, but if you look down San Diego, 7,986 homes lost due to wildfire. Quite a few up north. The number in Los Angeles is 797. And if you can't quite see it, the number lost, number of structures lost in Ventura County over that 10-year period. And the good news is we've, we've had no loss of structures due to wildfires since then is seven. So, I just want you to say that Ventura County, your, your Fire Department works really hard with the homeowners through our weed abatement codes, and it's a whole holistic look at fire prevention and aggressive firefighting to make sure that the residents of Ventura County are kept safe. And that's the end of the report. I'll take any questions.
Any questions for the chief?
Can you tell us a little bit more about the paramedic engine? Like, if someone calls 911, they're having a heart attack, that's what comes? Or do you, how does that work? Because we have such a big...
Yeah, so, that's a great question. So, all of our units have what's called AVL technology on them. So, no matter where they're, when they're driving down the road, wherever they're at, when a call for a heart attack comes, the engine and the ambulance that's closest to that call get dispatched immediately. So, one of the things that's nice in the Ojai Valley is a continuous of care. So, if you were to get in a car accident along the 33 freeway in Ventura City, let's say Medic Engine 1 was to respond, there'd be a paramedic on scene. If that same thing happened in Oakview, there's a paramedic provided by the fire station right there. If it was at the intersection of Baldwin, Lifeline ambulance has a paramedic right there. And if you get to Ojai, there's a paramedic right here in Ojai. So, the, what happens a lot of times, too, is that we in the Ojai Valley have multiple calls. The sheriff will tell you the same thing. Sometimes, things happen in groups. And so, it's nice to have that backup available in the event that there's a heart attack or more than one call at one time, or a lot of the units are going up on a traffic accident up Highway 33, there's still a paramedic here in the city of Ojai. So, it's just that coverage that we've been looking for, especially when multiple calls. The paramedics can start advanced life care, defibrillator heart. We can start an IV, give cardiac drugs, use a McGill Forceps to get somebody that's choking or be able to take and reverse the, the cause of anaphylaxis due to bee sting or that sort of thing.
Excellent. Can I ask one other question? How much did, what was the statistic on traffic collisions, the increase? Because it seemed like you said a very significant number.
Well, it just happens to be that's where we had a lot of people injured due to traffic accidents in last year.
But does that mean that there is an increase in collisions?
I'd have to look at the numbers, but there, it was the leading cause of injury that we had last year for our stats.
Okay, that's important to know. Thank you very much.
Okay. Are there any other questions of the chief? Ron, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Before, before we go further, I wanted to suggest to the council that we possibly reorder the items as we, we talk about them. And I hope it doesn't goof us up on the pink slips of the numbers. But Councilman Haney made, I thought, a good suggestion that following the consent agenda, if we were to move the appointments for the Arts and Recreation Commission up, that'll be a quick item. And then go directly to the public meeting regarding tourism, which I, from the looks of the audience, many of the people that are here tonight came to speak on that. And then we would go to our public hearing and take our oral reports at the end of the agenda. Does anybody have a...
Yeah, oral reports at the end is good.
Okay, we'll, we will then, we'll go to public comment. Let's see what, what we have here. Well, I have two. I believe you have a public comment. Tony Thatcher and Mark Lewis on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here to remind you about Ojai Centennial Jubilee Weekend, which is April 7th and 8th. On the 7th, we'll be having a play called "The Birth of an Ocean: Ojai, 1917," put on by OPAT and the museum, suitable for all ages. It's in Libby Bowl. It's about an hour long, professional actors, and it's free admission with open seating. And then the next day, on the 8th, is when we're having the Jubilee Picnic in the park. And that's, again, from 10 to 2. It's free to everybody. We hope to get a really good turnout from the Valley members. It's a picnic. We want to invite everybody to celebrate what happened 100 years ago when Mr. Libby handed the deed to the post office and the park to the Ojai Civic Association. And that will consist of, we'll have the veterans with the flags, we'll have the Nordhoff Band, we'll have a few speeches, and then we'll have some fun and games. We've invited any civic group that wants to attend to have a booth there, and the deadline is this weekend. So, anybody knows a civic group that hasn't responded, please get the word to me. And it'll be, it'll be a lot of fun, and it's a picnic. And I have a flyer. I'll leave them out here on the table on the way in, and hope you all will come to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony, and thanks for the work and planning the event.
And you wear a costume. This is, this is a typical Thatcher student costume.
Okay. Mark Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor Johnston, Council. We're double teaming you tonight. I'm Mark Lewis. I'm the president of the Board of Directors. And as my colleague Tony Thatcher has pointed out, we're about to celebrate, as you all know, the centennial of the Ojai makeover, Nordhoff to Ojai, the new architecture, the new name. The guy that made that all possible, as you also all know, is Edward Libby. He did not actually live in Ojai most of the year. He was a Toledo, Ohio resident. And as part of all this, we want to alert you that this Sunday at the museum, 4:30 to 6, we're having an event which explores, which will actually bring in some people from our sister city, Toledo, Ohio, to talk about the connections there. We have some folks from the Libby House, which is a National Historic Register of Historic Places house in Toledo. We have the archiveist from the Toledo Museum of Art, a nationally known museum founded by Libby there. He did actually more there than he did here, just bigger here because we're smaller. And we'll also have the creative director of Libby Glass, which still exists. And Libby Glass was the firm where Libby got all his money. So, everything he did here, the post office, the arcade, the pergola, the Oaks, the former St. Time, St. Thomas Quaintess Chapel, which is now the museum, the Ojai Valley Inn, and on and on. The money all came from Libby Glass, and they do some interesting stuff. And all those folks will be here at the museum for Town Talk on Sunday, 4:30, May, March 5th, and we hope to see many of you here or there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Is there anyone else who, under public comment, that didn't, that... The chief.
I just stand corrected because my eyesight isn't quite what it used to be. The number one, I couldn't see it that far. The number one cause for the medical calls was actually falls, not traffic accidents. So, it's falls, falls, TCs, and then sick person. So, I just wanted to correct the record. Sorry for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to the consent calendar.
So, I move to approve the consent calendar. Items 1A through H.
Second? We have a motion. We have a second. I guess there wouldn't be any discussion on consent unless someone wants to pull something. Otherwise, will the clerk call the roll?
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Okay, now, we're going to take up item three. And you have a report in your agenda. Councilman, or pardon me, Mayor Pro Tem Wyrick is not with us to this evening, but he and I served along with the chairman of the commissions and did the interviewing. And we have two nominees, Stuart Crowner and Marcy Toshier. And I see Marcy is here, but Stuart out there. They are the nominees to serve on the Arts Commission, the two vacancies, and Jay Hirsch to fill the vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Do I have a motion?
I think to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Is it?
Jay, that's the Parks and Recreation was Eric Jacobson?
Jay Hirsch? What do we have? What do...
Wrong name.
Oh, well, that's not good. Let's just...
Is there a Hirsch somewhere? Yeah, there's Jay Hirsch on here. So, Arts Commissioner would be Marcy Toshier and Stuart Crowner.
Well, what is this other application we have in here?
This is the third application, two spots. This is like the Academy Awards.
Right, okay. Let me, this is like the Academy Awards, sort of. Not quite. Okay, we will start that again. For Best Picture of the Year.
Oh, it would be best art.
For the Art, for the Art Commission, we have, yeah, best artist, Marcy Toshier and Stuart Crowner. And for the Parks and Recreation Commission, we have Eric Jacobson. Okay, now...
Now, I move to approve.
Okay, thank you, Randy. We have a motion. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Do we have it right, clerk?
Great choice, great choice.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
Do we get to meet them?
Do what?
Do we get to meet them?
All right, well, yes, Marcy, I see Marcy there. I don't know.
I'm going to say a few words.
If you want to, at least stand up and wave. You don't know, we won't require any public speech unless you have prepared something.
Yeah.
Welcome, and thank you. And is Stuart out there? Not that they had to be, okay. Receiving on behalf of Stuart? No. And no Eric? Okay, I think Eric's working. Okay, thank you. Our, I'm sure I have this right. Our next item, I guess, will be, we'll go directly to the Ojai Tourist Improvement District Public Meeting. And I have a number of cards, but I think everyone by now, do we need a staff report on that?
It's your pleasure, Mayor. Basically, the recommendation tonight is simply for the council to receive public comment. There will be a subsequent, there will be a public hearing scheduled for this matter on March 28th at 7:00 PM as well. People can also address the council at that time as well if they would wish.
Right. And at that time, the council will actually take an action. Tonight, it's merely to receive information from the community. So, did Michael Addison? Then, oh, yes, there Michael. Oh, this is item three, pardon me.
Yes, I was merely here to advocate the appointment of the two new Arts Commission members, and I think the council made a very wise choice. Thank you.
Very persuasive, Michael. And for some reason, they batched you in with item number four. So, we'll, who else did I have here on item number three? Oh, we have, is it Neil, Neil McGuire? Did Neil want to also second the motion?
That should be item number two, I believe. I apologize.
You shouldn't apologize. I think that whoever filed these, I think, okay. Okay, Mark Whitman. We are now on our regular, the topic of the Improvement District.
Members of the City Council, thanks for letting me speak here tonight, and thank you for everything you guys are doing. I know what, what a time it takes to do what you're doing, and I really appreciate all the good work that the City Council does. But I think the last meeting, we were talking about the same subject, and I don't want to be redundant and, and say the same things. But, you know, last time, I think my main point was, let's send the right message to, to our community, the hardworking people out there who are, you know, trying to make a living and, and relying on the tourist economy. And, and, but I think Tony Thatcher's, you know, presentation tonight about Edward Libby, I think it was very fortuitous because I think, you know, he came to Ojai as a tourist way back in the day in Santo, Ojai, the Foothill Hotel. And, and he really, you know, he's what, he, his vision of, you know, of Ojai and creating, you know, the beautification of Ojai, I think, is what he was all about. If, if people haven't gone over to the museum to see that exhibit, it's, you know, really educational and some great history. I'd like to, I'd like to learn some more about, you know, what, what was conspired during that era and, and what, you know, what was the, what is the foundation of Ojai? And, you know, what was Libby's vision? What I could tell from that exhibit, he was just, he was trying to make a beautiful place to influence people, you know, to make us, you know, richer and better people, you know, for it. And so, we're, you know, we're on, we're on his coattails. We're benefiting from, from that vision. And, you know, it's, you know, it's a, you know, great benefit to us, and, and now people are pouring. And, you know, I admit, there is a boom in our economy as of late, but it came after the recession of, oh, you know, '07, '08, '09, when, you know, things were really bad. I mean, I was out of work. And, you know, now, now things are good, and, and, you know, people, things are finally, you know, getting good for, for a lot of the shop owners. But some of the shop owners are, you know, talking about, you know, a drop in their business after the STR, not banned, but you guys decided not to keep them. And we haven't felt the effects of the county's ban yet. That's, that's gonna, that's down the road. And so, you know, we're, you know, we're not sure what, you know, what that's going to do to the tourist economy and what happens at the next recession, which it's going to come. We know, you know, this, this is a good economy, but we know recessions, you know, I've been through about three of them. I'm sure you guys have too. But recessions come, you know, they're gonna, it's going to happen again. And so, what's going to happen in our next recession, and how are we gonna, you know, are we going to have to, you know, go back and start all over again? And I know I have eight seconds left here, but ours, is that right? Am I going over my time? Okay, well, that's, that's pretty much my point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Marcy Toshier?
I'm speaking, I'm reading something that Nigel Chisholm wrote, and I'm going to read half of it. It's pretty lengthy, and then Megan's going to come up and read the other half. So, anyway, this is Nigel. As a downtown business owner, I do believe that Ojai should invest in tourists. Regardless of what we believe, as to whether one thinks that Ojai has reached tourist saturation point or not, tourists have been and will continue to be the lifeblood of this city. It is important that we work to sustain our tourist trade. Having said that, I do believe the following should be carefully examined. Number one, the question is how best to do that within the confines of a citywide plan for sustainable, community-oriented growth. We should not be in the business of thinking that we need more if we don't have a clear idea of how many is enough. Only so many sardines will fit into a can. We can't make a bigger can, so it's all about the sardines. Number two, the only entity that has the best interests of the whole community in mind is the city itself manifested through our elected city council. I do not accept that a private entity that has solely the interest of its paid membership in mind operates in the best interests of the whole community. It operates, quite obviously, as one would expect, in the interest of its members, regardless of the alleged mechanisms in place to mitigate such issues. I believe that any funding of tourist outreach or city promotion should be dealt with directly by the city. I'm going to keep on going. Number two, any and all funds should be withheld until a reliable mechanism... Did I say that? Yeah. Did I say that? Okay. Until a reliable mechanism is created to track and account for any funds distributed on both a fiscal and benefit basis. When such a mechanism exists, it should be reviewed and updated annually. Additionally, a report should be issued every six months addressing the mechanism's requirements. Number three, extending funding in even the current amount for 10 years is simply bad business and bad governance, especially so when there's next to no acceptable mechanism to prove that the money is creating value or even knowing what the value should be. or even knowing what the value should be to begin with. No business in the world would do such a thing, but every business in the world would be extremely happy to accept such a handout. I believe that even this existing deal breaks your fiduciary duty to your citizens. Nigel, if the city is in the business of giving out free money for no proven return, I'd like to know to whom I should send in my request, as I'd like a piece of that action. I promise that I'll use it wisely. I won't prove it, but I absolutely promise that I will."
Thank you, Marcy, or Nigel.
Thank you, Nigel.
Yeah? Okay, the next speaker, Megan Berkwith?
Hi, thank you, Mayor and Council. So, to continue with Nigel. "I see no legitimate reason to increase the funding of the OTID as we do not seem short of tourists. Where's the benefit?" "Number five, given the water crisis upon us, it is by no means certain that we should be looking at increasing tourism. Six, if a business is solely reliant on tourists, they need to change their business plan instead of relying on governmental largesse to bail them out. I say that as a big old lefty. I trust tourists, but I love locals more." I love tourists, but I love locals more, that's what he said. "Let's pay attention to our locals who actually inhabit and are this community. At worst, you should extend the OTID as it was for two years. That would allow the council to appropriately reevaluate the entire situation without negatively impacting anyone or anything. What's the hurry, folks? Nigel."
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I can't help but comment that...
Will we give a clarification on where the money's coming from?
Yeah, I, I think we should.
Yeah, the, yeah, just for the benefit of the audience and anyone listening at home, this isn't, quote, "largesse" from the city. This, I call it a, a contrivance for, around the tax limitations of California. But it allows businesses, under certain circumstances, to assess a fee on themselves for a specific purpose for which they believe they benefit. So the hoteliers, the hostilities, the bed and breakfast would be levying this fee, and ha, or currently levying this fee, on the tourists or the sardines that they're bringing into town. And that money then goes into a fund and is administered through an organization that is affiliated with our Chamber of Commerce. And the purpose is, is to advertise the community and promote people to come visit us. So it isn't quite largesse, and I would agree with, you know, Councilman Blatt's concern that we, we don't want to be misrepresenting that part of it. There are other issues that were in the letter, I'll have to... Are, are you minions from, from the Vine? Yeah, right. Yeah, well, tell Mr. Despicable, we'll, we'll be in touch, yeah. Okay, Akabe? Is Akabe here? No, I can put you at the back if you'd like.
I see, no, nobody ever sits in the reserved for next speaker.
Yeah, I'll, I'll call, yeah, and the, and Sean Mason on deck, then, he can come up and get a...
Sean Mason on deck.
We'll move it along a little.
I spoke to this issue, whatever it was, a month or two months ago, or I, everything's blurry to me now. So I feel like I might be redundant in, you know, speaking again. But the other day, on Sundays, I work in a store in town. And I actually had an anxiety attack this Sunday, and I'm not prone to that. But I got completely, and I started off on the bad note anyway, the day. But I got completely overwhelmed trying to find parking in this town. I drove around for literally like 25 minutes. And I ended up having to park like two and a half blocks away from, you know, where I would work. And it's not ideal. I don't like leaving in the dark, because I leave in the dark, and having to walk two or three blocks after a full day, you know, full day. And I just, I actually ended up not going in, because I was not in a, I'm like, I can't actually handle strangers right now. I can't handle the people that are like, it's, I was overwhelmed by the swarm of people in town and like hardly any of the faces I knew. There were just so few. Anyway, that's just an odd example of why I would support taking a much more careful review of this proposal and, and taking time with it, as Nigel's, Nigel? Nigel in the form of suggested, I'm a little confused. But, yeah, to reiterate, just briefly, what I said in previous comments is, you know, I've lived here 41 years. I was born here. I've watched a long evolution of Ojai. And for the most part, it was a sort of slow growth, and we were able to adapt a little at a time. But the last four or five years since we've had this relationship with this 1% thing, it's increased dramatically. It's not like it's sort of like, ooh, we bumped it up, and that's good, and we're at a certain level. It's a domino effect. It just, it dominoes on itself, and it snowballs, I should say. And so I, you know, even though the level might stay the same, whether it's 1% or 1.5 or 2%, the amount of people that it brings in, it, it just domino, domino, dominoes. And I really do see that the quality of life will be affected if we don't do this really smartly. And when that quality of life is affected, we don't draw the same kind of people. We don't, we lose the people that are our community that we so treasure. I mean, after my daughter graduates from high school, I'm considering leaving this valley. And, and it makes me sad, but some of the things that I care about here, I see changing. And I'm looking for a smaller community that has that really hometown feel and not a lot of strangers. But, you know, I also value the people that it brings. I value, I, I value that it brings some great people to us, too. I'm not, I, I feel like I'm, I'm walking a fine middle ground here with my feelings on this. But I do strongly think we need to take, take review.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Sean Mason is up, and Scott Iker's on deck.
Hi, good evening. So I don't, I mean, I talked last time, so I don't know that I have a lot to add to what I said before. And I, I mean, I fully appreciate the challenge that you have because, well, I mean, I went, when I went to law school, I went to law school to be a mediator. So one of my strong points is I can see different sides, and one of my weak points is I can see the different sides. So I have a lot of compassion and empathy for people who are just residents here and live here, and the whole traffic thing. I am a shop owner, so I am definitely representing a biased point of view in terms of business. And I liked a lot of what Nigel said, because there is something, and there were some things that people said last time about, you know, if you, if it grows too fast, the very reason people come here gets lost, because now there's too many people here. And I don't know yet where, where we are in that, in that spectrum. Do we already have too many people? Do we not have too many people? But as a shop owner, tourism does make a difference for me. And, you know, I've only had a shop for two years, so I'm a new business. And as I said last time, you know, we're not profitable yet, this year. I know this year is gonna, it's gonna be this year that we become profitable. And we do enjoy a lot of local support. So, you know, like Nigel, I mean, I, you know, without local support, we wouldn't be anywhere. But we also enjoy the tourists. And something that, and I don't know if this is part of this decision-making or, or determining, you know, whether we go to 10 years, or five years, or two years, and is it 1% or 2% or percent and a half. Liz from Ozzu said something. It's like, you know, the weekends, we have a lot of people here on the weekends, so we don't have too many people here during the week. And I remember, I forget which hotel owner talked about, you know, they, they don't have 100% occupancy. But I suspect on the weekends, it probably gets close to 100%. But during the week, if there's something we could do to have it be more evenly distributed so that we do have people that can come here and enjoy Ojai, but they're not just doing it on Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday where we're already impacted. So, anyway, as a shop owner, I, I appreciate the challenging decision that you have. And I don't yet have the experience of too many tourists.
Okay, right, thank you. Thank you, Sean. Scott Iker?
Good evening, Council and staff. I don't have too much to say here tonight. You've heard a lot from me already. But I do want to say that we are seeking to maintain the current level of tourism and not increase it. The OTID is a group of hotel owners who have decided to increase the productivity of their hotels by marketing them along with the city and the Valley of Ojai. The marketing efforts paid for with hotels' assessments of their clients benefits a large number of local businesses that do not have the time, the funds, or the expertise to market themselves. The funds that will cover the OTID expenses will be generated solely by the hotels within the agreement. The city has not contributed to these efforts in two years. There will be no funds coming from STRs or vacation rentals. We agree with the city about removing the vacation rentals from both the city and the unincorporated area of our Management District Plan Area map. There are two vacation rentals currently on the Ojai Visitors Bureau website, and those will be removed on October 31st of this year. We need to increase our revenues to maintain the level of marketing currently at play and to rebuild our reserves. We may need to increase the assessment rate at some point over the life of the renewal, but that increase can only be granted by the City Council and can only be requested at the annual renewal date. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question? I don't know if Scott could answer it. I can wait to ask.
No, go ahead, it'll be, make it...
Once, whatever is approved, is approved on March 28th. Can the, can a future City Council change that? Is this, is it written in stone, a 10-year contract? I mean, you know, what are, those are questions I have, a lot of people have.
That's a question for the City Attorney, but we don't need to get into that right at the moment, until we get all the comments.
I just thought it was Scott, yeah.
But it's a good point, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Carolyn Von Driscoll with Jerry Dunn on deck.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and City Staff, Carolyn Von Driscoll. As you take the next step in the decision whether and under what terms to renew the OTID, please assess the matter with a bird's eye view, a view that takes into account all of the things that make Ojai the community in which we all want to live and that tourists want to visit. Before you render your decision, please take affirmative steps to gather necessary information as to potential negative impacts of the ongoing and increasing marketing of Ojai on water, traffic, neighborhoods, our local economy, local housing supply, schools, and air quality, to name a few. Otherwise, we may continue to see inputs such as that published recently in the Ojai Valley News by a longtime resident who says that, quote, "It has been painful to watch Ojai devolve from a town for its residents into a Potemkin village for tourists with residents as props," end quote. And by a tourist who says that, quote, "Traffic was so backed up, I wondered why anyone would think this town was worth their time to visit. It seemed like tourists looking at other tourists not worth our time or effort to try to find something special about the place," end quote. "We need to make informed decisions now as to what constitutes a sustainable and successful community business model for Ojai residents, visitors, and our local economy alike, for today, but also for tomorrow. By considering the big picture now, then we as a community will thrive, our residents, our businesses, and our visitors. We will keep Ojai the place where we want to live and tourists want to come. Please don't make this decision prematurely, lightly, or narrowly. Thank you."
Thank you. Jerry Dunn and Aaron Embry on deck.
Hi, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Jerry Camery O'Donnell. I've lived in Ojai for 33 years. And before we rubber stamp the tourism budget, it seems prudent to weigh all sides of marketing Ojai to tourists. Visitors are our bread and butter, and we want to attract them, but consider the danger of being too successful. I've been a travel writer for 40 years, mostly for National Geographic. I have never seen a small town benefit from over-promotion to tourism. I've also lived in Aspen in the 1970s, when this little Colorado mining town was being sold, actually sold out, to the tourist industry. And I think we have to question, if Ojai is in similar danger, are we becoming a tourist town? A tourist town is a commercial product, image that's being sold. You think of Santa Barbara, and that's an example. I think we're teetering on the edge. As people have said, weekend throngs bring Ojai Avenue to a crawl. It's hard to find parking. Many residents avoid downtown on Saturday and Sunday. There's a walking tour called Eating Ojai, which I think sounds kind of ominous. And another business sells bike tours through the East End, and they're advertising, they say that they can handle large groups. This is how a small town gets swamped with tourists. I think we have to decide, do we, the people of Ojai, want a life or a lifestyle? An authentic community or a soulless tourist town? And on the other side, are the crowds getting what they came for, you know, an unhurried, unspoiled village? The Tourism Improvement District spends nearly half a million dollars a year to promote Ojai, and I think we're fast becoming a brand name with national recognition. Our Visitors Bureau works with a big PR firm to encourage travel writers like me to write, blog, and broadcast about Ojai. In just the past year, they've generated 45 stories. You'll see headlines like "Finding Om in Ojai" in the American Airlines magazine, and on Yahoo Travel, "Weekend Getaway, Girls Gone Ojai." All this means more visitors. But the number of tourists we attract should not exceed our capacity. That's our capacity to live an authentic life in our own town and visitors' capacity to discover what makes Ojai special. Let's protect our small town from being irrevocably damaged by over-promotion. Many of us think Ojai has already reached the limit. I hope the council will table the tourism budget until you've seriously considered the big picture of tourism itself and Ojai's future. Here's the hard truth. Once our lovely, fragile town is lost, it's gone forever. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Aaron Embry is up with Peggy Lucera on deck.
Thank you. Thank you, Johnny. Thank you, Council. My name's Aaron. I moved here about 13 years ago. I'm a pianist. I'm on the faculty of the Ojai Youth Opera here. My daughter is a student here. Before I go further, can I disarm everyone with "Find Your Pink Moment" and upscale bohemian chic in the same sentence as "Chumash"? For a moment, will you consider this? Four months ago, the house that we were renting for six years, I've never had a credit card. My wife and I have never owned any property. We were renting a house for six years behind the Vons, and the owners wanted to sell, so we were forced to move in September. We were paying $1,800 a month. The house that we're living in now on Golden West near the fire station, we're paying $1,900 a month, and the owners want to move in in September at the end of our lease. So we're looking at listings, and lo and behold, we see the house that we moved in four months ago. We moved out of four months ago. We were paying $1,800 in that house. Now it's going for $2,800 a month. That's four months ago. And, and, and I don't know any educator or artist or anyone else who's really in the fabric of this community that makes it so fabulous to be here can really sustain that kind of living expense. And I, I love it here. I have a lot of, I have a lot of friends here that are becoming family to me. And there's a new artist collective now that's opening in Miners Oaks. It's called Greater Goods. It's next door to the Arrowheart Yoga and Cardinelli's Music Shop, right next to the Bookends Bookstore. We're, we're doing lots of things in conjunction with Farmer and the Cook, and a lot of community-centered discussions and arts programs. And, and, you know, I really want, I wanted to, I wanted to come here and talk about the underutilization of Libby Bowl. But in the spirit of solidarity, I decided to talk about this tourism thing. And, and, and I'm, I'm a shop owner, too. I sit at my piano, and I play for people at the farmer's market every Sunday morning. And most of them are tourists. But I think really, most of them are actually Angelenos coming to find their pink moment. So, you know, I mean, we have to be, we have to... know, I mean, we have to be, we have to be real here. I think the majority of the people that come here to Ojai are coming from Los Angeles and, and, and marketing to Los Angeles with this romanticized kind of manifest destiny, Western thing. It's not in the spirit of the Latino community. It's not in the spirit of the Chumash community. It's not in the spirit of Fernando Tico. And, and, and the legacy of, you know, the pageantry of Edward Libby is great. I think that's awesome. And we're coming around the centennial now, and we're talking about this stuff, and I think it's a timely discussion, but the legacy of Edward Libby is over.
Thank you, Aaron. Peggy LaSara with Jennifer Haley next.
Hi, I've spoken, um, thank you, Mayor Johnston, members of the City Council. I've spoken about this issue before, and I've read a number of the letters that are being read tonight, and I don't want to repeat a lot of the very elegantly stated arguments that you're going to hear from people like Michael Haley and have already heard from Carolyn Von Driscoll and Nigel Chisholm via Marcy and, and others. Very appreciative of Akabie's statement and Aaron Embry's statement. And I think about the artists in this community, people like Carmen Abellera, whose landlady is elderly, and when she goes, where will Carmen and, and Eric Anderson go? She's my favorite artist in, in Ojai and has been for a very long time. And, and there is just, there's a lot of consideration for the merchants and a lot of consideration for the hotel owners, but there's very little consideration for the people who are creating the culture that makes Ojai the place that tourists want to come. We're, our nation is becoming greed obese. Our town is becoming greed obese. And, you know, we've reached a point where we're not even being truthful. You read these pieces. I want to fact-check these pieces. Have you read these pieces? Do you think that they're telling the truth about Ojai? There are lots of truths to be told, and some of them contain blatant lies, blatant lies. We can continue to, you know, bring more and more people in, but we're creating a town that many of us no longer feel is Ojai. I don't know what it is. I read something on, in the Ojai Community Forum today by a friend, Bill Moses, and, you know, he said that, you know, he's decided that he thinks that he really wants Ojai to be more bucolic. And I thought, bucolic, it's, it's as if it's a set design, you know, but he talked about how many jobs are being created. And I've heard that from Laurel at Azu and many other people. We're creating jobs. I'm really tired of hearing that. We're creating jobs that pay 34% of a living wage. The people that have those jobs don't live in Ojai. Half of the people that work at Azu don't live in Ojai. They can't afford to live in Ojai. We're creating a Third World culture here. We're creating Ojai as a place where people commute back and forth, creating traffic, increasing emissions in a, in a encased valley. Please do the right thing. And 10 years out, that's insane. And I, I don't even think they believe that they could possibly get 10 years. They asked for 10 years so they'd get five years. But culture is increasing exponentially on, on all fronts. And so making a decision a year out, two years out, and the fact that it takes four years to get good placement in vogue, it should not be our concern.
Thank you. Thank you, Peggy.[880.01][880.01](Applause) Okay, Jennifer?
Yeah, hi.
With Bill Miley on deck.
Jennifer Haley. I live in the county section of Ojai. Maybe what we can take home tonight is realizing Ojai is already successful. We are truly fortunate to be living in a historically spiritual, safe, and happy community, touched by goodness. Not all places can say they have that. If we move forward with the OTID that business community is pushing for, Ojai will get short-changed. When business puts itself first, it takes what it wants when it wants it without regard to the impact it will have on the community and the historically understood limitations, mainly water and two-lane road access. It's what I call business chauvinism. The LA Times, New York Times, Sunset Magazine, and others have run long articles about Ojai. The Ojai Inn and Spa continually brings more business to Ojai by their own investment in advertising itself and the qualities of the town. That's a huge free gift of advertising for the others. What more does the business community want? If certain businesses aren't thriving like they think they should, the easy answer isn't getting more advertising money to get people to come to their place of business. They need to take a good look at their own individual business plans. A common mistake people make is creating a business that doesn't pencil out or selling what they potentially like, personally like, but doesn't resonate with customers. The main reason people come here and return is to experience what has always been called the Shangri-La in Ojai. This is rare, and we shouldn't exploit it with expanding tourism. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Bill Miley's up. Tom Francis on deck.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. My family has lived here since 1968. To start with, I know and believe that when the past, when a past council funded a startup Visitors Bureau in 2010 and then created a Tourism Improvement District in 2012, they saved the city of Ojai from economic disaster. That's a good thing. I consider us now back to normal. Now for the future. I have given the city clerks a set of copies for your council of my extended email comments and requests, census data summaries and data pages on family income and housing costs, an updated chart on city TOT taxes, sales taxes, general fund revenues, and my recommendation for what to do. I also provided 20 sets for the public. I believe it would be in the best interest of all of us that a thorough examination be made of the economic life of the city. The census data I provided shows that more and more households and families in our city are in lower income brackets, paying more and more of their annual income for places to live. Many families finds it, finds it, they find it hard, if not impossible, to establish themselves here. Here's an example. 10 years ago, Nordoff had 1,000 students enrolled. Today, they have 700. We have fewer families. Affordable housing is a great need. Just look at the number of families and households that pay more than 30% of their income for a place to live. I believe that the, the data will show that tourism promotion, OTID, for Ojai supports and creates mostly service jobs with annual incomes of less than $40,000. It's hard to raise a family on that in today's Ojai. Right now, I believe there is no budget to organize an active effort to promote non-tourist economic development in our valley or city. We need that for better-paying jobs, which will support families and households in a healthy way. In my email that I sent you yesterday, I crafted a set of questions and statements, which I believe if studied along with other issues, will help guide our community to a better future. So, I believe, as others do, that the best action for our community by your council would be to extend the current Ojai Tourism Improvement District for two years at 1%, and then at the same time, create an ad hoc, an ad hoc study group with members from the community, the chamber, city government, and the council to thoroughly examine all the issues to determine what's best for the economic life of our city. To close, let's not be hasty with our city's destiny. It belongs to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.[1180.63][1180.63](Applause) I confiscated your other, I'm glad you reinvested in the smaller ones. Thank you. Tom Francis up. Vicki Byrne on deck.
Good evening, Mayor Johnston and Council. I just wanted to address a couple of quick things. First one is, Mr. Iker made a comment earlier tonight that they're seeking to maintain, not increase, tourism. And what's interesting about that is everything in the, everything that is proposed as present is an increase. So, it's proposed to increase from 1% to 1.5% with an allowance to actually go to 2%, which would be double. So, it's, at a minimum, it's, it's proposed to increase by 50% and potentially double. And then also, the duration, 10 years. I don't understand why 10 years would be necessary to maintain the status quo. It just doesn't make any sense to me. So, if, if the purpose is to maintain, I don't understand why it's proposed as it is. It just, the facts don't support the comment. Secondly, Mr. Whitman made a comment about the next recession. Recession's come and they go. They have for my entire life in California. And what's interesting about that is if you look at, for example, the real estate values, when there's a recession, the, the areas that get hit the most and the fastest as far as dropping land values are, are vacation areas, people's second homes. And so, if we want to be ready for the next recession in Ojai, it seems to me that we would want to diversify our economy and not be so heavily reliant on tourism. Tourism is great for Ojai. It does a lot for Ojai, but I think it's a balancing act, and I think that it's important to consider other options, maybe, you know, promoting other business ventures that are more ecologically sound for our valley, easier on our local culture, and most importantly, if you look at it through a financial lens, ones that will not, you know, essentially disappear or diminish greatly if we have a major recession. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Vicki Byrne's up. Kitty Johnston on deck.
Good evening. Just so I don't appear always crabbing and ungrateful, I really do appreciate[1364.01][1364.01](Laughter) that, that you removed the STRs from the OTID. I really do appreciate that. Okay, so back to crabbing.[1375.33][1375.33](Laughter) I have a few questions regarding the OTID that I believe you, as Council member, should have the answers to before making a decision. Does the Council have any recourse at all after vote to modify this plan? What Councilwoman Francina said, what happens if you want to slow down the spending? Do you have any way of tracking actual tourist traffic? Can you relate it to an amount of money spent? Is the tourist response straight line or is it exponential? Do you know the traffic level today compared to the last time a traffic study was done 15 years ago? What are your plans if we have total traffic gridlock? And do you have any idea how the OTID affects traffic? Do you have the means to evaluate how much tourist traffic is due to the OTID spending versus Airbnb and VRBO, who continue to promote short-term rentals in Ojai, which, by the way, continue to increase. They are not decreasing in number. Other than your own speculation, or that of local businesses, or the opinion of the chamber and the outside marketing firm, who both, by the way, depend on the OTID for at least part of their compensation, have you investigated whether suspending the OTID for a period of time would actually have a negative effect on tourism? I looked into the marketing budgets of a few other cities to see what they spend per capita, that's per resident, on marketing. Napa spends $32 per, per resident had. Santa Barbara spends $27. San Ynez Valley, including Solvang, spends $44. San Luis Obispo spends 17. Beginning next year, Ojai will spend $79 per resident on marketing. I would caution you not to underestimate the discontent in this community about the current level of tourism. This is a big issue with the residents of Ojai and will definitely be an issue in the next election cycle.
Excuse me. Could we have a copy of those questions?
Yes. Do you want me to, I can?
If you, you know, at your, your convenience.
Yeah, I will, I will email, I will email council members.
Thank you very much.
Kitty Johnston up with Ray Powers on deck.
Mayor Johnston.[1522.33][1522.33](Laughter) And Council.
Good to see you.[1526.45][1526.45](Laughter)
I hadn't planned to, to speak tonight. I don't have, I'm trying to make some notes so I don't sound like a complete idiot, but someone raised the question of when is enough enough? And it really struck me because the other day, I was riding through town, taking my grandson home from school, and he looked at me and he said, Grandma, why are there so many strangers in town? And I looked at him and I said, honey, how can you, he's 14, 14. I, he's lived here all his life. I said, how can you tell there's strangers? And he looked at me like I was an idiot, and he said, well, can't you tell?[1562.63][1562.63](Laughter) And it made me think of the town my kids grew up in, that my grandchildren aren't experiencing. And it was a town of interconnectiveness. And I look out and I see the young man who taught my children swimming, who then became a famous architect and remodeled our house. And I see Monchichi, who was in his Boy Scout Troop, and I see Akabie, to whom I look up to now, and I've known since she was a tiny child. And I think, that's Ojai. It's all these interconnectiveness of, of coming together. And I don't know if that helps your decision, but, but to me, it was sort of iconic of where we are and where we were. And the only other thing I wanted to say was that I had lunch, this was some time ago, with a friend of mine, with whom I worked at Monica Ross for many years, and she got this startled look on her face and looked around the restaurant and said to me, Kitty, do you know anybody here? Do you recognize any of the faces? And I looked around and I said, absolutely not one. And that was an epiphany for both of us, and we never had lunch in, on the weekend in Ojai again. But, but it, it is a different way to live in a town when you, when you go in and everyone's a stranger. And it makes me sad that my grandchildren feel they live in a town of strangers. Thank you.
Ray Powers up with Michael Haley on deck.
Hello, Ray Powers, 788 Matilla Hot Springs Road. I'm speaking personally, not as a member of the Plan, City Planning Commission. I'm a systems thinker. To me, everything is connected, so we can't, for me, I can't look at tourism, or our economy, or the drought, or affordable housing as separate subjects. They are all interwoven. I wrote a little something I want to read. 2017 is the 100-year centennial celebration of the naming of Ojai. In an inspired 1917 speech, Edward Libby suggested a name change from Nordoff to Ojai. It was voted upon and accepted, and so today, it seems both timely and appropriate to once again ask, what will Ojai look like 100 years from now? I know that's a far reach. Can we envision the future with greater clarity? What decisions, policies, and lifestyle changes need to be acted upon now or not to ensure that the next 100, 100 years are built on a solid foundation of foresight, honor, and respect with regard to conservation, economy, and healthy communal living? Can we wholeheartedly become a model of social design and sustainability in all manner of speaking? And if that's possible and practical, what would it take to achieve this? Does being hyper-focused on the tourism industry create a dependence that will eventually corrupt the inherent fabric in essence of the Ojai Valley? Is it still a viable option? And/or is it even supported by the majority of Ojai's residents? How do we maintain a balance between economic stability and quality of life? Can we foster widespread community dialogue to explore the diversification of our revenue streams in order to be less reliant on tourism? Ojai is in perpetual motion with its increasing visitor population, but it may be a case where the extra marketing and efforts to get the word out are benefiting, benefiting the few rather than the many. Indeed, when does economic viability become exploitation? Indeed, when does economic viability become exploitation? It's important to have foresight and envision the Ojai we want in 2050, if not 100 years. The decisions we make today will affect those who inherit our choices long into the future. Perhaps there are other options to consider and explore, small, clean, green cottage industries and small startups that could provide profitable goods and services that also contribute to our tax base. Ojai's compact and rather isolated geographic makeup may offer another exciting option. Ojai is poised to be a model community, and always has been, if we so choose. It is a small enough area with the leadership and skill sets to actively implement the most ancient and modern approaches to water management, land management, education, traffic flow, housing, energy generation and consumption, public transportation, public arts, intergenerational exchange. All of these contribute to an economic base. It seems apparent that for the last-
You're just about, your, your time has come.
You want me to stop? Three sentences.
Three sentences.
Hmm. Thank you.
We don't bank the time, but go ahead, get your three sentences. I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
It seems apparent that for the last 30 years, possibly more, Ojai has focused more energy and resources on tourism rather than creating the cleanest, healthiest, and most vibrant ecology possible for Ojai's residents. And though there need, there's renewed and serious interest in more holistically inspired, cleaner, and greener way of life, we seem to be having our focus elsewhere. Are we running the risk of creating a future wrought with damage control scenarios? It's not a this or that choice, but must be a this and that when it comes to promoting the tourism industry.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
And I don't know if I have all the cards, but my last card I have right now is Michael Haley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city councils, fellow citizens. I'm Michael Haley. I live on Kennewa Street. My comment is that in no other business would you adopt a half million, million-dollar advertising budget without knowing what kind of customers you intend to attract, whether you have the capacity to serve them. If you went to any Chamber of Commerce in this country and presented that kind of plan, they would laugh you out the door. You couldn't do a business that way. Yet that's exactly what our chamber is asking us to do. Spend half a million dollars a year with no traffic study, no idea of how much water it will use, how many visitors it will generate, and whether we have those resources available to handle it. And yet, we're asked to commit to a 10-year plan without knowing any of that. And I think that's folly. If Ojai is going to move into the big leagues of mass advertising budgets, which this is, it's a big budget, New York Times articles, related levels of feature articles, and a constant social media branding campaign, then Ojai also needs to move into the big leagues of planning for traffic, water, housing, and the general impacts on the community. To not do so is a recipe for disaster. No other place would even considering doing this kind of advertising without planning for the impacts. Take the Ojai Valley Inn and Spa. They've, they've raised their accommodation levels, but they spend a lot of money planning for it. They're organized around it. They're constantly in motion. They're constantly changing the situation. And they do a lot of planning, and that's because they're a smart, well-run, professional organization. Are we going to handle this like amateurs? Are we going to just pass a apparently random number for advertising and sit back and see what happens? We don't know what's going to happen with this. So what I'm advocating for is professional traffic engineer to really study this. Look how we're making this decision. It's a bunch of people, like me, who's not a professional, coming up and giving their opinions. Well, that's not really going to help anything. We're just going back and forth from one side to the other. So we absolutely do need to have an independent, objective traffic study from professional traffic people before I think we should even consider passing this plan. Another issue that the, the current city council members ought to take into account is that there's a sleeping giant of voters out there who haven't yet tuned into this issue. I get this from my neighborhood. I talk to all my neighbors. The truth is that Ojai is not primarily a tourist town. Yes, we have tourism, but most of the economic base in Ojai comes from people who commute to work in Ventura, Santa Barbara, and other nearby cities. Ojai is a bedroom community, a suburb, if you will. That's the economic base of Ojai. There's 200 unemployed people in Ojai. That's it. Unemployment in Ventura County is lower than 5%. If this OTID causes a big increase in traffic during commute times, you can bet those people are going to be unhappy because they're going to be sitting in their cars even more than they are right now. And then they're going to find out, how did this happen? It's because the city council passed this OTID. And, and you know, I just wouldn't want to face that myself in the next election. Thank you.
Please. Is this on this item or another item?
It's for this item.
For this item?
Yes.
Okay.
Marissa.
Marissa?
Yes.
Okay, Marissa, you're up.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Council. I am completely unprepared, so I will probably speak not very clearly, but I wanted to come out. It's pretty rare for me to come out. I've been a resident of Ojai for 23 years. I raised my son here with Akka.
Can you go a little closer so we can hear you?
Thank you. So many things have been said here quite articulately. One of the things I want to emphasize is the more that we take care of our families, the better Ojai will be. It's like, so, it's like I question, what, what do we need? In the, in the realm of permaculture, people care, people care is one of the tenets. There's, the longer that we're able to stay in a place, we, the more we know the environment, the more we know our people. We, I love, I'm just going to ramble. I love that we've had many generations of families that have been in this, in, in Ojai, and we're losing that. And as one who is an advocate for families, I really want to bring this on the table as well in terms of, in light of the subject, is what can we do for our families? There was also mention of gathering together our community, various community members. There's a process called open technol, open space technology. It's an incredible process that doesn't need much planning, but it pulls together the resources and the insights of the community members in terms of what is important to them.
Speak a little louder, Marissa, or come closer, one or the other.
Is that better?
Because it's important what you're saying. We want to hear you.
Thank you. Is that better? Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's a process called open space technology that allows people of different perspectives to come together and talk about what's important to them and to create a plan. It's a, an agenda from the inside out. And so I want to also just suggest that as something to look into as other possible ways of figuring out how to diversify.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question, Marissa?
Yes.
I, I was a little bit confused about this process. Is this a process, what I'm feeling very much is that we need a process where the different viewpoints in the community, you know, can come together for the greater good.
Yes.
A process where we're not vilifying each, each other, where we really take time to understand each other's perspective. Is that what you're speaking about?
Yes, yes. It's an amazing process for that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, that, I believe, for all, is there anybody I missed? And maybe I have a card here, I just didn't find it. If not, then that will conclude this particular discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I can, happened to be answered the question posed by Councilwoman Francina earlier.
Okay.
Which is that disestablishment of a tourist improvement district is governed by Streets and Highways Code, Section 36670. Short answer is, the council has the power to dissolve the district, stop the assessment once it's imposed, but under certain conditions. First, there could be no outstanding unpaid debt. As I understand the management plan, they're not proposing to issue any bonds, so that probably wouldn't be triggered. Second, the council has to find, after notice of intent to dissolve, then a hearing, and then a final resolution of dissolution, one of three things: misappropriation of funds, malfeasance, or violation of law in connection with management of the district. It has to be on those bases for the council to dissolve the district. Every year, there is a 30-day protest period in which the assessed entities may also dissolve the district by majority protest. Does that answer the question?
Well, in part. In, in other words, if we had traffic gridlock, that would not be a reason to stop the assessment.
Correct. Traffic gridlock alone would not be a sufficient reason to, under the law, to stop the assessment.
Or any other reason that would, you know-
Any quality of life type reason would not qualify. It would have to be malfeasance, misappropriation, fraud, theft, something like that. Some error of law or judgment in running the district. And I believe the city manager may have a further question? Or I'm reading that wrong?
If I could just add one more comment, which I think was also part of your question, was in terms of the, the rate, once it's approved by council. Our understanding is that the, the council sets the range of the rates, and then it is the, the board of the district that would be able to increase or decrease that.
That's correct.
Thank you. So it's not, no longer in our hands?
Yes. Once the council sets the range, which is proposed between 1% and 2%, then that stands unless the council finds malfeasance or fraud or other issue.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Summers, it was my understanding that before there could be a rate increase, that the district would have to come back before us. That's not the case?
That is not correct. The council, the council sets the max at 2%, but the increases in the range presently proposed to go up to 1.5% as of January 1st, 2018. The increases after that from 1.5 to 2 are controlled solely by the owner's board.
Okay. Okay. Are there other questions on this topic?
I just have one comment on it. I'm just, I'm surprised to hear it this way. I wonder if, if the, the original count-
Just, just a minute. Okay. I'll call on you, Scott, just a minute.
Well, all I'm trying to say is, is I'm just, you know, what I just heard is, once this T-Bid was put in place, that it can't be stopped, other than by the, other than by the users of it. And I've been just wondering if the previous council even understood that when they initiated this. That, that's a concern to me, that the council doesn't have the right to rescind this, I don't know, what are we going to call it? This law? Or this ordinance? And it just, that, that concerns me. That's a concern.
I'm going to allow Scott to make a comment, but not to get into a debate over the law.
No. The, any rate increase that we ask for has to come before the council. And the council has to agree to that before it can be granted. That's the way it was explained to me five years ago, and that's the way it was explained to me just this afternoon when I questioned Civitas, the group that does probably 90% of these things, so.
Okay, we will-
That's my understanding, so we have to come to you if we want to increase our rate of assessment.
We will definitely look into that and have a firm answer, which I believe we do have.
With respect-
By the, by the time the public hearing is held-
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. And the last point to add is that if that is the wish of the council, the rule that is under debate is built into the management plan, not the law. The council has the power to force that increases within that rate range be approved by council. As presently proposed is not the case, but you have the power to force that. You do not have the power, though, to reserve the right to dissolve the district in the interest of anything other than malfeasance or fraud or similar.
Okay. With that, we will conclude this item, and I'm going to take a five-minute recess, in case anyone needs a recess, and then we will come back together for our public hearing.[1404.83] case anyone needs a recess, and then we will come back together for our public hearing.[204.84]
The garden wall, what we refer to as the garden wall is certainly a different story. So, our position, explained in Slide 10, is essentially that the wall was presented and approved in 2013. We constructed the wall in reliance on that approval, and we believe that no further action is required from the city in order to maintain that wall. City staff, as you can see on Slide 11, does not believe that the garden wall was previously approved, or that it was adequately approved. And they've offered several grounds for that in the administrative report. And so I would like to take those in order, and with some detail, as this issue is very, very important to us in order to preserve that garden wall. So first, staff contends that the applicant did not adequately disclose the garden wall in the 2013 entitlement proceeding. So I saw that concern, and I went back to the city's files from 2013. And I'll go through here, obviously, I feel that there was more than adequate disclosure of the plans here. So first, for example, the site plan, excuse me, that was submitted to the city in the summer of 2013, is behind Slide 12, and it's a pullout. I've highlighted in yellow on that site plan, the note that refers to the new garden wall. And as you can see, and this is still a reduced version here, that note is legible. It's the same font and size of the other notes. And it clearly refers to a new three-foot-high, again, what we are referring to as a garden wall. Second, city staff and the applicant's architect exchanged letters, seeking clarification regarding the height of that garden wall. Those letters are also, copies of those letters are also provided behind Slide 12, and I've highlighted the portions that refer to the garden wall. And then third, and this one is particularly important, the city staff report from 2013 describes the project, obviously, there's a project narrative, a project description, and included in that is a discussion of the garden wall. And so that report stated, quote, "A new plaster garden wall is proposed within the front yard setback. However, this wall will not exceed the three-foot height limitation established in Table 3-3 of the municipal code." And then lastly, I was not involved, but our applicant team presented a PowerPoint presentation in 2013 to the planning commission that summarized the components of the project. And that included a reference to the new garden wall. And that slide from that PowerPoint presentation is also included in your packets. And I've highlighted, again, the specific reference to the garden wall reference, and that PowerPoint includes a reference to the new garden wall, and also the retention of the existing wall. So again, looking at these materials, which all came from the city's files, we believe that there was more than adequate disclosure of the fact that in 2013, we were asking for a new garden wall. Obviously, the site plan was approved in 2013, and again, it's our view that there's no further action that's required from the city in order to keep that garden wall. I want to also address the statement in the administrative report that contends that the city, because of these past inadequate disclosures, has never really been able to adequate, excuse me, adequately analyze whether the garden wall is consistent with the city's municipal code. As you can tell from the language that I just read a few moments ago, that's not true. The 2013 report expressly stated that the wall was consistent with the code, a specific reference to the section in the code, to the table in the code that provides the height limitations. So that reference was included in that report, and the analysis was done. I also wanted to note that the resolution that was adopted by the planning commission in 2013, which is Resolution 13-16, included a statement indicating that the site plan and the other materials that were provided with the DRP application, quote, "include sufficient information as to assure compatibility with the surrounding area," unquote, "and the goals and policies of the city." And that resolution, that excerpt right there, can be found at Page 2-31 of your administrative report. So again, we have the city saying, "We've got sufficient information. We've looked at the wall. We understand that's part of the project, and we've analyzed it against the code, and we believe that it's consistent with the municipal code." So I also want to next address, then, the, I think, maybe relatively newfound position from, that's found in the administrative report, that when you have multiple walls in a front setback area, that you have to cumulatively analyze the height of those walls. So for example, if you have a four-foot wall and a three-foot wall, you really have a seven-foot wall, I think is that position. First of all, there's no, excuse me, I want to note, as I do on Slide 13, that city staff, in a prior report for this project, and that excerpt is attached behind Slide 13, stated that the city, unlike some other jurisdictions, has, quote, "no standards for how to measure stacked walls." So this is not some type of express policy that the city has, or a policy found in guidelines that requires that cumulative height analysis of the walls. I think actually, when you look at the municipal code provisions that deal with walls, fences, and retaining walls, you see exactly the opposite. You see a contemplation in those code provisions that there will be stacked walls at times. And again, all of them are subject to the three-foot height limitation. So again, I don't think there's any, there's certainly no provision in the municipal code that speaks to this, and it certainly wasn't the interpretation of the code that was applied by the city in 2013. So we did construct the wall. It was constructed at three foot, three feet from the top of the existing wall and grade there. We did not import any fill to raise the elevation of the front yard that would allow us to then in turn raise the height of the wall. And I don't know if you were able to see this in any site visits, but if you go behind the wall, there's a little bit of landscaping, and then there's essentially a patio back there. So it's not a, it's important to note that, I mean, we refer to as a garden wall, it's not a stem wall, it's not a retaining wall, it doesn't serve a structural purpose or a foundational purpose. It really is to delineate the front patio, and there is some patio furniture in the front there as well.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, could I ask the applicant a question? I'm a little confused at this wall. You have highlighted on your pullout sheet, it says, "Proposed three-foot-high site wall with plaster finish," and it looks as though the call-out goes somewhere down just on the inside of the sidewalk. And then if you go down from there, there's another call-out that says, "Proposed three-foot-high site wall with plaster finish," and it looks like it's referring to the wall that is the white wall here. Is that correct?
That is not correct. That is a separate reference, and so the reference to the-
Well, where's the reference to this wall?
So if you look below the highlighted portion that I have provided-
Yeah.
-below that, there is a separate note that says, "Existing four-foot-high retaining wall at back of walk." So that is the white wall that existed prior to 2013, and I believe, as stated at the planning commission meeting, that that wall was constructed in the 1960s.
Okay.
I think the building permit for that is in the 60s.
All right, so, I'm still a little confused as to this, the call-out with the line as to where that line goes. It doesn't look to me as though it goes all the way back to where the patio is delineated. Looks to me like it's much forward of that, because it looks like there's some sort of a fountain. Is there a fountain between the-
There's landscaping.
Landscaping. And it says landscaping, but it looks like that wall is all the way back in this general area here.
Well-
Is that correct?
No, it's not very far back in the front yard.
It's not as far back as this.
No, and I don't know if it would be helpful-
Maybe you have a bigger blueprint.
We do.
For site plan.
Yeah.
Each council member should take the opportunity to view the map. The same map provided by the applicant is, let the record reflect that. And any council members wishing to make comments must make them on the microphone, so that all can hear. Thank you.
And while that's being reviewed, I just confirmed that the, as-built horizontal distance between the two walls is approximately three feet.
So, am I correct that this area in the front that looks like it's landscaped, that is the depiction in this photograph of the area between the two walls?
Yes, councilman.
This here?
Yes, councilman.
Okay. Does anyone else want to look at the-
No.
Okay. All right.
I would like to interject something, I don't know if I should have done it before we started the discussion, but I believe-
Go ahead, Randy.
I did visit the site, and I did meet with the city, with their attorney, so I just wanted to put that publicly out there, prior to this discussion tonight. So I just want to make sure that that's on the record.
Thank you.
You want to know if we visited the site? Because I've visited the site twice.
Yes, the council members that visited the site should note that for the record.
Yes, I visited twice. I spent considerable time in both, from both directions, you know, went Crestview, you know, the way it goes.
Right. I didn't visit the site prior to this appeal, but it seems to me that this project was before either the council or the planning commission at one point in time. Did it come before the council in 2013?
I do not believe so, but I'd ask the director to confirm.
Not that I'm aware of. I'm sorry, not that I'm aware of.
Then I'm not sure what the site visit I did, it wasn't recently, it was a few years ago.
It's come before the planning commission a few times, so it may have been one of those prior times.
Might have been for that, then.
So, bringing us back to Slide 14, again, I think it's clear from the materials in the city's files that, again, the garden wall was disclosed, it was analyzed for land use consistency purposes, and again, our view is that no further action from the city is required, and we do not need a DRP modification for the garden wall. So I'd like to turn now to, I think, what was the next key issue for the planning commission. I think we heard it again from staff this evening. The key issue besides the garden wall, which really was the color of the home, as noted at Slide 15 and immediately behind it, there was a color palette for the home that was approved in 2013, and that color palette was made part of the DRP approval resolution itself, and that can be found at Page 2-42 of your administrative report. I've also included a copy of the color palette, excuse me, behind Slide 15. That copy comes from the city's files. I know that there was a discussion at planning commission that, depending on who printed the color palette, it may look different, there may be some slight variations there. That did come from, a copy from the city's files. So as you can see, the color palette shows that the front of the home was intended to be a yellow, even orangish tone, and there are references there to various portions of the home with regard to the different colors. Some of those colors up above are trim colors, but the yellow and orangish color below, or right above the rock is what was intended to be for the front of the home. Unfortunately, there was a rendering prepared for the project that illustrates a different color tone, and that rendering I've included in the presentation at Slide 16, I think it was also in your administrative report as well. And I say unfortunately, because really, that rendering, which I think was very nicely done, but it does seem to present a different color tone, and I think it's that rendering and not the color palette that seems to have established the expectations here as to what the home would look like, not just from a style perspective, which we'll get to, but from a color perspective. And that should have been avoided in 2013, certainly. But putting that aside, I'd like to get back to the color palette, which again, is what was actually approved in 2013 and made part of the DRP approval. And again, you can see that the existing of the color of the home, which is on the front of the PowerPoint presentation, is not so far away, if at all, from what was depicted on the color palette. And that was noted by a couple of the planning commissioners, that obviously, if you look at the rendering, you get a different idea, but if you look at the color palette, it does envision that yellowish, orangish tone. So what I'd like to do is focus on whether that color, what's there existing now, is compatible with the neighborhood community. Obviously, that goes to the findings that are required for the DRP, and we took a look around and believe that that color is in fact compatible with the immediate neighborhood. So at Slide 17, what I've done is included a map that illustrates the location of several homes in the immediate neighborhood. And what I wanted to do was to show you that we did not go through the city of Ojai and cherry-pick various homes that were similar to this one. All of these are within a stone's throw of the project site. So at Slide 18, we have a lime-green home at 314 Santa Ana, which is right before the curve to Crestview. Across the street from that home, that's depicted at Slides 19 and 20, we have a fairly bold yellow residence. And then finally, there is another yellow home on Crestview itself at Slide 21. And again, on Slide 17, all of these are shown in stars. So I have some more examples of homes from the neighborhood later on in the presentation that go to the style and the overall design of the home and the compatibility issues there. And there's a variety of colors that are depicted in that neighborhood. But I think that these examples show that a yellow home, like the one that we have at our site, is certainly compatible with the neighborhood. And I think that's demonstrated in part by the fact that we did get supporting comment letters from two of the neighbors, and those are included later in the packet as well. So beyond the color of the home, it did not appear that the planning commission objected to the overall style or the overall design of the home. That is, the absence of a craftsman style, which was certainly contemplated in the 2013 DRP, we recognize that. But the absence of that style really did not seem to be driving the planning commission's decision, as the commissioners did seem to recognize that there were numerous styles in the neighborhood. But I do want to address the issue, and I do so beginning at Slide 22, because it is continued, it is addressed in the administrative report. So as you can see in Slide 22, there are design elements for the home that were approved in 2013 and have been modified. We do recognize that there's modifications to the DRP that required, required to account for these changes. I did want to note with regard to the listings on Slide 22, that there is stone on the front of the home, as you can see, it's not necessarily quite in the location that was depicted in 2013, but the garage and the front door and the second story does have some stone trim on it. So that element is present, but not in quite the same fashion as envisioned in 2013. So I think the initial item that I've got on Slide 22 is really, you know, maybe what was the most important one, and seemed to have been driving some of the other changes, which is that the front of the home primarily uses plaster, with the exception of those stone elements, and not wood siding. I've included a letter behind Slide 22 from the project architect from last spring to city staff that explains that the wood siding could not be utilized after all because of extensive wood rot. So the decision was made to use plaster, which was consistent with what was utilized on the side and the rear of the home. So again, we're facing compatibility issues here, I think, with regard to the findings that the city has to make to approve this. And so starting at Slide 23, we've included illustrations of other homes in the neighborhood. Again, I think the primary point here is that in the immediate neighborhood, there is not a consistent style, craftsman or otherwise, that dominates. There's a fairly wide variety. I think there's one other, you know, true craftsman home, but there really is a wide variety of architectural styles in that neighborhood. I wanted to note, too, that you can look at some of the homes that are depicted on Slides 23, 24, and 26, and you can see that those have pretty similar massing and overall size as our project home. Certainly, there are some examples in the neighborhood to the contrary. There are some very smaller homes, I think you can look at Slide 28 and see a few examples of those. But again, you know, we think, looking at the neighborhood and looking at these examples, that what exists at 601 Crestview is not out of character for the neighborhood. And again, I wanted to mention, we did get two comment letters from neighbors that I've included behind Slide 29 that are supportive of the project, very complimentary of the work that was done on the home, and I've included them here because it did not appear that they were included in your administrative report. We did obviously see a comment in the council that was prepared, or excuse me, the package that was prepared for council that objected to portions of the project, and one specific comment from Ms. Newman focused on the visibility of a gas meter on the side of the home. I wanted to note that we've included new landscaping to address that comment, and that's shown at Slide 30. So we might disagree with regard to the overall nature of those comments, but we did want to try to be as good a neighbor as possible and as responsive as possible to that comment. So that new landscaping has already been added within the last couple of weeks here. The last item that was referenced in the administrative report with regard to the consistency issues is a cabana structure that would be located, or is located, in the home's backyard. At the planning commission proceeding, there was originally a motion and then an amendment to a motion that would have approved that structure, just like the roof and the roof line had been previously approved. Then there was a very lengthy discussion about what that would require from a findings and resolutions perspective, and so that amendment was withdrawn. I view that as the planning commission understanding that in all likelihood, their action was going to require the applicant to come back with another proposed plan, and the cabana could be approved at that point in time. I did not hear any objections to that structure, it's in the rear of the home, so I'm not going to address it in detail. I did want to acknowledge it, and if there are any questions, we can, we can address those. So in conclusion, we certainly recognize that there are items here that will require a modification to the 2013 DRP. But those items do not include the roof, and they do not include the garden wall. So we also believe that the color of the home and the overall style of the home are compatible with the neighborhood. We appreciate the council's direction on those issues. We appreciate the grant of our appeal. We thank you for your time and your consideration, and as I mentioned, we do have a project team here if there are any questions. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
I have comments, maybe questions, but does Kathleen, does she respond before I make comments, or how does that work? This is my first appeal.
Well, I-
Do you want-
Staff has made their presentations, so I assume they'd like to respond to, what, comments and questions, if you have some.
That would be reasonable. You may also see if there's any other speakers, I don't know if there are, and take them first.
Pardon me, yeah, let's see, we may, do we have any other?
And then you could close the public comment portion, then staff could respond to the council's questions and to the points raised by Mr. McGuire.
What was the last part of that, Matt? He closed what?
After any other speakers that are present speak, you could close the public hearing. Then staff could respond to the issues raised and to the council members' questions.
About questions of the applicant, do we-
Oh, you could ask those as well.
After the-
Well, you'd have to reopen the public hearing. So if you have questions of the applicant, not of staff, you may ask those now.
Do we have any questions of the applicant right now that we, if we do, that would be a good time before we-
We don't know, I don't know yet. Let's just skip the public-
Okay, let me ask, are there other people in the audience that wish to address this item? Okay, I don't hear any or see any hands. All right, Paul?
Yes, I just, so that I can get my mind around this. You came before the planning commission in 2013 with the design and the, and with the request that the building look a particular way. And then it was built, and it was built substantially different than what was envisioned when you came with the first DRP. Is that correct?
I think we might quibble about substantially different.
Okay, but it was built differently.
There are, we recognize there are items that are different than what was approved in 2013.
And those include the columns and things like that?
Yes, councilman.
Okay. So what you're, what you're really here for is to say that, yes, you acknowledge it was built differently, and you're coming back to ask for permission to allow it to be left that way, but that you, we shouldn't have to concern ourselves with that second wall, for one, because that was anticipated in the initial design.
Correct.
And we shouldn't have to concern ourselves with the color, because that was disclosed and anticipated at the initial 2013 approval, and we shouldn't have to concern ourselves with the roof. Is that correct?
I think that's an accurate summary, yes, councilman.
And then the other things, and that's still up for debate as far as staff is concerned.
Understood.
But then, what are the, what are the areas of the design that were built that do need our attention because they were built differently?
So I think we are then looking at the design elements, which really are, so it's the columns that are now plaster columns and do not have stone. There's wrought iron that was used instead of the approved material. The stone location in the front of the home is different than what was envisioned in 2013 as well. And if you give me a moment here, let me just check my list, so I can accurately list all of these.
Is it on Page 22?
I'm on Page, Slide 8, but-
Page 22 is the design elements, revisions to elements approved in 2013.
Very similar there, yes. So we have a plaster versus wood siding in the front, columns are plaster instead of stone and steel, plaster porch instead of wood siding, stone veneer additions were not included. Again, there is stone on the front of the home in other locations, and the railing was changed from stainless steel to wrought iron.
Okay. Now, Slide number 16, that says, "Rendering provided in 2013." Forgetting about the color at this point, was that the rendering that was approved by the planning commission?
I don't know if that's-
The design?
Yes, it was. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you speaking to me.
So, as-built would be as shown, as reflected on the cover sheet?
Yes, councilman.
Okay.
So if I could just address, the rendering was certainly provided in the 2013 planning commission proceedings. And again, I acknowledge that it certainly set expectations here. I don't believe it was part of the formal DRP approval.
Okay. Thank you. Adam, anything further right now?
Thank you.
Shall I go ahead?
Go.
Well, I have to say that I like the new design better than the original. And I did not realize that it was so massive already originally. And, you know, I have some notes, but I first came around, you know, from the left, you know, the, you know, I went in one, the, I don't know how to explain the direction, so I pointed this way, and I admit I was startled, you know- So, I pointed this way, and I admit I was startled, you know, you could, it's different, it's very different. But it's a very beautiful, unique neighborhood. It's an incredible neighborhood with a lot of unique houses. So, I thought, hmm, you know, then I went and I read the report, and I saw the validity. I, full disclosure, I spoke to one of the commissioners, you know, I just did a little research. Then I decided to go back from the other direction about two hours later, and I immediately saw that the house pretty much matched the neighbor to the, coming, facing this to the right. And I thought it looked great. I thought the house looked great. I saw it with fresh eyes, you know, and I thought it was beautiful. And as far as these, the walls go, I don't think it's logical to do a cumul, that doesn't seem logical to me, the cumulative, that logic. Plus, I cannot in good conscience oppose this because there's been some horrific walls installed in Ojai. It just feels like, you know, everybody knows about the wall at the, near the top of North Signal, near Pratt Trail, you know, I just, so compared to things that have been approved in the past, and there's other examples, I can see that with maybe some vines hanging down, if you want to soften it, it would be so easy to soften it, the, you know, the front.
And we did present several options for landscaping improvements in front of the planning commission. They chose not to pursue those options. I do, in my bag, have a sample of the rendering that was provided to the planning commissioners. But there was certainly an approach that was looking at softening some of those concerns with landscaping.
And I like that you addressed the neighbors' issue with the gas meter. I think that's about all. I, you know, I really have to say, I didn't go around the back or, you know, anything. I just looked at the front. So, the cabana is a separate issue, correct? It's a separate issue?
We, it.
It should be.
At the planning commission, we, yes, we think it is a separate issue. At the planning commission hearing, there was some uncertainty as to whether the plans had actually been presented to the city. They have been. They may not have been in front of the commission that evening. They had seen them previously, I believe. So, we think that those could be acted upon by staff with the information that's been provided already.
Yeah, my sense is that, you know, there's a process. We have a planning commission, and some things seemed, didn't go right. But I think the end result, I really like it, you know. I think if the, if the paint was the lighter palette, it wouldn't be probably an issue as much, because it would more be in keeping.
More muted.
But more muted, but it just so happens that I like that color.
At this stage, let's go with questions, and then we'll close the hearing, and we can discuss amongst ourselves. Are there other questions of the applicant?
Well, I just have one last thing. I just, the legibility of the garden wall is difficult, but I do see it noted on here. So, and I do see it noted that there is an existing four-foot retaining wall. So, I think that's just important to recognize. If the arrow isn't specifically to the dotted line where the wall's going to go, that's an error in architectural. But the idea that it's called out for doesn't, you know, to me, just precludes the thought that it wasn't on this site plan, so.
And just to add to that very briefly, again, it, we had documents besides the site plan where that was referenced. It was included in the staff report. It was included in the presentation to the planning commission. So, I mean, I, I don't think this is what's driving this, but hopefully, there isn't a concern that there was some subterfuge there. You know, we disclosed it certainly in our PowerPoint presentation, front and center. It was not the primary component of the DRP application at that point in time, so I could see how it wasn't the focus of attention. But besides the site plan, there were discussions in 2013 about the existence of that, so. But I understand the concern.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions, then I'm going to close the hearing, and we will take it under consideration, okay? The hearing is now closed. Discussion or a motion? We have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see if staff has any response.
Okay, thanks. So, I think there's a little misunderstanding regarding the garden wall. The issue was that this was the elevation the planning commission saw and made their findings for approval as far as scale, massing, and it doesn't show the wall. And that's where the disconnect comes between the wall being on a site plan. It's difficult on a site plan where it's flat and a bird's eye view to see what it will look like now as you see the picture, the rendering you have now. That's where the concern came, was the massing of having one wall, another wall, and then all but one color. So, I think that that was where there could have been a better job between, you know, presenting this and not showing the massing of the wall, or how far, how close it would be to the next one, or the fact that then behind it would be filled in and with patio now like this. So, I think that's where the planning commissioners felt this was substantially different from this, and the issue of the wall came up because majority, there were a few of them that were still on the commission that were there. Of course, I wasn't there in 2013, so I can't speak to it, but I think that was the issue with the wall, was it's hard to make a massing determination when it's not shown. That was the issue.
Kathleen, can I ask, Mayor, can I ask you a quick? Kathleen, if that wall had been presented in that rendering, would you have been able to see the whole front of the facade of that structure?
I see, I think so, just like you can now.
No, no, on the, on the, on the original rendering. So, in other words, if I, if I took that rendering and put a three-inch wall across, you know, a three-foot wall across the front of it, am I now allowed to see the bottom of these support columns? Am I allowed to see the siding or any of the work that's going on behind it? Because I think if the wall had been presented, the question then would have been, okay, so what are we doing behind that wall? Because we can't really see it.
Right.
So, maybe they should have provided.
More elevations. Correct.
You know, more, more.
Correct. I mean, this is what was provided. We, we, obviously, this was done before I came here. We wouldn't take something like this to planning commission now, or we would hope not to. And then we, we would make, certainly, we would critique it and say that this isn't enough for, you know, for you to make a decision on, because this isn't truly an elevation. This is as he stated in rendering. But having said that, that's, that is what caused this conflict, is that it wasn't shown that when they, when these pictures were then presented to the planning commission of how they didn't build this, but they built this, built that, it was shocking to them. That's where it comes from. So, with that also, you know, the change in the colors, you know, when you look at the color palette that was proposed, it's very clear that the lighter yellow is what the body of the, of the house was supposed to be, okay? If I know if you have it there or not. Regardless of how this was, got to this beige color, I have no idea, but it would have been a much softer color, but staff has presented that idea to planning commission a number of times about the color palette. And so, when it really comes down to it, the applicant and the planning commission were unable, there were different versions of, of trying to soften the massing or limit the massing, adding more stone, and he tried a couple of different things of reducing the massing of the wall, this patio up here, adding stone to it. He tried a different, another, a number of different presentations to get it to where they can get consensus. Sorry. Anyway, it just, they never manifest itself, that there was some consensus, but it is a true statement that they did offer different versions, different softening of the palette, the plant palette with some vines, or additional stone, or a change in this. But what they didn't want to do, and where the real stumbling block came, was over the color. You know, they didn't want to paint it or soften the color, and planning commission just cannot get over the overall massing that is created by that intense color. And that's where they kind of got to the point that then they didn't have a shared premise, and they just moved forward. And so, with that, I think that it is true that the original roof color on the color palette or the material board was a mottled color. It had a light and a dark color. He indicated to me that he couldn't get that color anymore, so we kind of stood back and, you know, from afar, well, what one, what happens when you stand far from a mottled color? And that's the one I chose, the one as close as I could get, because that's really all you can do when a manufacturer stops manufacturing a product. And the, there was some concern over the raised eyebrow here, and we worked that issue out in planning commission, and we were able to get the roof completed for the applicant because, of course, he was without, he just had the roof, the tieback or whatever was up there. And so, planning commission did work through that, and that is true, that that different elevation in the roof line is not really an issue at this point. We, he's allowed, he's been allowed, is it all but the eyebrow that you completed? Or did you complete the whole thing?
Yeah, so, we kind of.
Okay, all of it. So, we did come to compromise on some things, roof color, the eyebrow, et cetera, but we still, it still ended up being the overall massing and the color. If that kind of gives some, kind of willow it down to the issues?
Well, you know, it's interesting to me from a landscape perspective, in five years, that house is going to change, because the plant material's going to grow, and, I mean, it's just going to be different in five years, so.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a hard one for me. I don't have any inclination to take down a three-foot garden wall. Was there a permit required to put that wall in?
Well, yeah, they, there is even a correction, I think, that the applicant just provided there.
So, again, we had the opportunity at that time to review that wall, and we allowed it to go through.
Correct. So, the whole permit was issued the way it was. I think the only issue was, because it's coming back before the planning commission, was it not being shown in the massing.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Summers, the, I, what I'm gleaning from this is that this matter went back before the planning commission, as many projects do, asking for forgiveness rather than permission.
Correct.
And sometimes, as I recall, having been on the planning commission for 10 years, we said, no, you're going to have to go back and change it to its original design. And we did that for residential structures, as well as the one in particular I can remember that took a lot of work, was a, was a commercial structure, a hotel. And it was clear that what was built was clearly different than what had been approved. So, the applicant is now coming back before the planning commission, asking for the planning commission to approve this design under the original design review permit, correct?
Right. He's, he's applied to modify the original design review permit to approve this design, and as is noted, contends that pieces of the new, the new design are not actually new design, but rather were previously approved.
And the planning commission denied that request.
Correct. With the two exceptions of the eyebrow and the roof color, they did approve those two.
So, it's come now before us to see whether we're willing to approve these changes based on the original design review permit, rather than sending the applicant back to obtain a new design review permit, correct?
Correct. The question before the council is, can you make the findings to approve a design review permit with this proposed design or not?
Okay. And, and is it, so is it a modified design review permit that we're, we're asked to either approve or deny?
Correct.
Okay. And what's the criteria to have an original design review permit modified versus having to have a new design review permit?
In the case of a substantial modification to an existing design review permit, the findings are the same and are laid out in the staff report, I believe. The, if it's a minor modification, that doesn't change one of the key elements considered by the commission when it approved the, approved the design, or would otherwise be inconsistent with what was originally approved, that's a minor modification that staff can approve. As is noted here, staff approved the change in the roofing material.
And when it went back before the planning commission, they said, this is just too substantial a change for us to be able to approve under a modified design review permit. It needs to come back before us with a new DRP.
Well, the commission's direction was, we can't approve these modifications, meaning the applicant has two, but they did deny it without prejudice. So, the applicant has two choices, assuming the, if the council approves exactly what the planning commission did, the applicant has two choices. One, you could try a new, with a new design review permit application, although it's the same finding, so I would expect the same result, or else apply to modify the design in some way, whether all the way back to what was approved, or else something between what exists and what was approved. Alternatively, of course, the applicant could return the building back to what was approved. He retains the right to build exactly what was approved, and then there's some fights there.
And my last question is, is it purely discretionary on our part, whether we're going to accept this as a modification versus requiring a new DRP? Is it purely discretionary, or are there any legal parameters that we have to pay attention to?
The parameters are the findings that must be made to approve a modification, in this case, a substantial modification to a designer view permit. The other parameter is that any, any elements of the design elements at issue that the council finds were in fact approved in 2013 become vested rights to which the applicant has that, has the right to continue. The issue there is, the applicant contends that the color was approved in 2013. The planning commission majority concluded that the color was not approved in 2013. That's the first one for the council to consider, is a vested right, what was approved in 2013. The second is this second wall, the garden wall, it's been referred to as, was that approved in 2013 or not?
Okay, thank you.
I have one final question, Matt, while you're responding, is if it does go back for another DRP, and planning rejects that, they appeal it, it comes back here again, correct?
If they took the route of applying another DRP.
So technically, we'd be back in the same spot that we are tonight.
If the planning commission acted.
Who chooses to do that.
Right. And I think the key variable there would be, does the applicant simply apply again for what has already been considered by both this council and the commission, or does the applicant modify the design and apply for something different?
Yeah.
So, where does that leave us? Do we have a motion?
Paul, I'll look for.
Well, I'll, I will make a, a motion that we, that we grant the appeal.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to grant the appeal. So, further discussion?
One point to bear in mind, in terms of logistics, what's before you was drafted as a draft resolution to deny the appeal, as is the city's practice. To approve the appeal would require drafting a new resolution to reflect approval of the findings, so I would suggest that the maker of the motion might perhaps articulate a finding or two. Then the motion would be to grant the appeal and direct staff to return to the next meeting with a resolution on the consent calendar reflecting that appeal in full, and then that would be approved at the next meeting.
That'd be part of my motion.
Considered for approval, rather.
I, I just want to make a comment that, having been 10 years on the planning commission, I show with great deference changing something that they've looked at and in their responsibilities and taking their duties very seriously, have decided that they can't do what I just made the motion to do. However, I also think that in looking at what the end result was, the planning commission has to make its decisions far more administratively than we do, and they have to make their decisions really within the confines of the box that the planning commission operates within, as, as well as staff operates within. One of the real pleasures of being on the council is, we don't necessarily have to stay within that box to make our decisions, so that when we look at a project like this, to me, I like the end product better than what was originally approved. I have no problem with the second wall. I think that the color is consistent with the palette. It may look as though it's masked, but overall, as, as Councilman Haney said, that massing is going to change over time with the, with the landscaping and the foliage around it. So, I have absolutely no problem looking at this particular end product and saying that I could approve it.
Further comment? Is, was the amended motion or the substitute motion acceptable to the second?
Yes, it was.
Okay, so we have it moved and seconded. I guess what's going through my mind is, you know, we have a planning commission, and they do, as you say, take their work very seriously, and they do have limitations or parameters that they have to stay within. I'm trying to think of what is the remedy in this case, and is the remedy better than what we have here? I would have to agree on just purely a judgment thing. I think it looks, you know, very attractive. It certainly didn't, I don't think it detracted from the neighborhood, and it doesn't appear that the neighbors are concerned. It's kind of more of a procedural thing, and to ask.
It's kind of more of a procedural thing, and to ask the Planning Commission to think again and think differently, rather than their, their best judgment, I don't see that that necessarily adds much to the process, so I, with that... I just, if I could just make one more comment, and, and Mr. Mayor, my, my initial persuasion is to not grant the appeal, because I believe that people should come back during the construction process and get approvals, and not come back, you know, asking for, as I said, forgiveness rather than permission. So I'm persuaded, though, that what we have here is not only in the best interest of our community, but also in the best interest of the applicant as well.
Further comment?
No, I hope you grow something beautiful, and that attracts bees on that wall. You know, I'd like to see hummingbirds and butterflies and bees.
Francina, we are, you haven't had a vote yet, so they may want to, you know, send the bees to your house.
You know, Mayor, I just wanted to, to chime in with, with Councilman Blatts. There is, the Planning Commission does have restraints, and they do have guidelines, and they do have a methodology to their madness, and they do it well.
Yes.
Correct.
And so I just, you know, I don't want this to, to go back to them, thinking that this is something that's going to happen all the time, but, again, the end results are better than actually the, the front end, the front end of this. So I have no problems with that.
My, my concern is the, just what you were referring to, Paul, the, you know, the, the idea of the, what, when I was growing up, we called the Jesuit law, that it's easier to get forgiveness than permission. I don't think that should be the message, and that gives me some reluctance in going against this. I just think the factual situation, you know, requires the king's equity. Yeah. And I, and I had to be persuaded, you know, in the opposite direction, because that's my initial thought when somebody comes to me for it. I also want to point out that as I felt in a lot of decisions that came before the Planning Commission when I was on it, that I felt that if I had leeway, I would have approved something, and it was appealed to the city council, and ultimately, they did approve it. I never felt bad about that, and in actuality, I would be a little disappointed in our Planning Commission if they had approved this. Because it is a little, it is a major change to what they looked at in, in 2013. So I think they did their job properly here, and it came to us for, for the ultimate decision.
Yeah.
Yeah. If I were a Planning Commissioner, I would be a little disappointed if the council sent it back and said, you know, "Change your mind." I don't think they should have to change their mind, I think they gave their best judgment. I think it's an unfortunate circumstance, so, okay, if there's, no further comment, why don't we have the clerk call the roll?
Mayor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Okay. So did, did the city manager and the city attorney get what they need as far as...
Yes, we do. It's our understanding the direction would be to return to the city council at the March 14th meeting. We'll put a item on the consent calendar, which would approve the modification to the design review permit for this project, under the fighting, the findings that were stated as part of the motion.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Peggy, you have a comment?
Hi, I just want to quickly clarify a comment that I made earlier. I used a public Facebook post that Bill Moses had posted today, in expressing comments that were my own. He used a couple of terms that served as triggers for kind of a springboard for me to talk about my views on things. And Bill felt that I didn't, and correctly, that I didn't accurately express his views. And I just want to say, he said, "I agree that our town has got too busy with too much traffic on weekends due to tourists flocking to Ojai, and while I have a tourist-dependent business, I also have lived here for 25 years and miss the more bucolic Ojai." So that more fully expresses Bill Moses's views. He went on to say something about, you know, he appreciated that the tourism brings in jobs, and I commented about that, and I, the term bucolic tripped some of the puff pieces in my mind, and I commented about that, and I didn't want that negativity to be associated with Bill Moses, because he's on our side.
Thank you. Sounds like it's on both sides, but...
We love his caviar.
That's the risk Bill was posting on, on Facebook. You're probably still watching.
Whose side are you on?
Yeah, okay.
Who's the first?
We have not done, what, the council reports and manager reports?
Right.
So should we do the manager report first, and then we'll...
Right.
Okay. Mr. City Manager, thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For, for those who are still remaining in the seats in the chambers, you may have noticed we're trying a little different seating arrangement this time. We wanted to see if we could get a few more folks into the chambers this way, so we're trying this out, and looking for some feedback. So just wanted to announce, for those who are wondering why the room looked a little bit different, that's what we're doing. Wanted to give an update to the city council on where we are on the short-term property rental enforcement. I do have a handout here that I can give to you. This is a report that, as of to date, and this is an update since the last formal update was provided to the council on July 8th, 2016. Since that time, seven cases have been closed. Those cases have either had a compliance agreement, or the ads have been removed, or the owners have provided documentation that the short-term rentals are no longer taking place. We are currently monitoring 38 non-active cases. Those are, those are cases that have had no active advertisement or lodging complaints since fall of 2016. Staff is continuing to monitor those to confirm compliance, and if new advertisements are found, they will be moved to the active cases. There are 13 cases right now which are pending, and which additional review needs to be done to verify if the advertisement was actually removed after receiving notice from the city. We have two active cases with verified violations, that has been found actively advertising for short-term rentals as of February 22nd. The properties will be issued citations, and the owners will be contacted, see if they want to enter into a compliance agreement, or fines will be levied. And then we have three new short-term rentals, three new properties that are advertising short-term rentals that staff has verified. Monitoring and research will begin to verify the property location, and we will move forward with the, with enforcement on those. We continue to monitor the sites as appropriate on a weekly basis. We will close cases if no violations are verified for a period of three months. We will issue cease and desist letters to those who are violating the short-term rental regulations, including advertising. And we are issuing citations to those who have received the cease and desist letter and continue to operate in violation of the code. We have to answer any questions.
Yeah, I have one question, one question for you, Steve. Is advertising the primary method of trying to assess whether or not there's a violation? Because in some cases, the ads get taken down, and then I've had people send me screenshots of ads that have been run in places that were very familiar probably to all of us, so we're just wondering how that, that when you say monitoring, what does that entail?
Oh, so, right. We, we want to make sure that the ads aren't going back up, once, if they've stopped. In other words, if we've, if we've seen that they were, that they were advertising, and if for some reason they, they have stopped advertising, either on their own accord, or after receiving a warning from the city, we continue to watch those for a period of three months, to make sure that they don't pop back up again.
Okay, those are on the ads.
Those are on the ads.
But as far as someone who says, "Okay, well, all right, I'll, I'll advertise a different way, where you won't catch me, or I won't advertise at all, but I'm still doing it," is there any...
So on that case, it's a little more challenging, because we either, we need something that we can verify to be able to, some type of evidence to show that they actually did, you know, rent the property illegally. One of the ways that we've been doing that is relying on reviews that people do post online. And the other ways that we've, you know, we've, we've been able, to a certain extent, we can rely on neighborhood complaints, but again, that doesn't actually provide the, the specific evidence. So I think part of it is to try to come at them from multiple directions. I understand your point. You know, part of the reason why I think the council went the step of going to go after the advertising was exactly the, the, the fact that you bring up. You know, it's pretty easy to continue to probably still rent and, and get away with that, but the problem is, if you're not advertising in a way that people can find you, it's going to make your ability to, you know, it's not going to be nearly as lucrative. But it is challenging, though, particularly if we don't have a review that we can point to, because unfortunately, you know, out-of-state license plates, or people coming and going, or, you know, even seeing some type of a pattern, that's, you know, we're not fools here, we can say, "Okay, it sure appears to walk like a duck and talk like a duck, so, you know, let's, let's try to observe it and see if we can confirm that it's a duck."
But we do keep kind of a master list of people...
Yes, we do.
...who at one time or another were sort of flagrant in their approach.
Yes, we do. We've got...
I was sort of astonished when I saw one of them not too long ago, from someone quite well-known to all of us and a friend of mine, and I thought, "What is going on?"
Right.
I didn't know if it was a joke or not, but, okay, so you are, I'll talk to you more about it later, but thank you.
Yes. No, we, we realize we have to continue to watch for these, and continue to watch for the ones that had advertised in the past, to make sure they don't pop back up.
Any other report from the city manager?
Um, yeah, I wanted to hand out, it's very informally, this is a very informal budget calendar, we're getting towards that time of the year. If you could take one and pass that one down. And we started the process at the staff level. We would be distributing something to council probably in late April, and under this schedule. We're proposing that we hold our first budget workshop in May. We would then finalize that mid-May, and distribute it to the council and the public at that time, and we'd be looking to then have a second budget workshop on May 23rd. And if everything stays to, stays on the calendar here, we would be going to the city council for potential adoption on, on June 13th. We picked that date because it gives us a little bit of a cushion. We have to have a budget adopted by July 1st, so if we, we did, built a little bit of room into this calendar for, for delays, so if we do get pushed back on the 13th, as long as we get something adopted by June 27th, we would meet the July 1st deadline. So we're happy to answer any questions on that, and there'll be much more to come on I think that's all that I have for my report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Council reports, none from Paul?
I had one, one comment that I ran by Steve, I just wanted to bring it to the council, that the Ventura County Watershed District meets on a monthly basis, and in the past, we've had Greg Grant and his assistant represent us, and they've at times had a difficult time going to him. So I would like to request that Councilman Wirick and myself be placed as our representatives on that, on that board.
And which board is this?
It's the Ventura County Watershed District.
Oh.
It would just give us, we're, Bill and I are both committed to being a part of this water issue, and it's a three-hour, four-hour meeting, monthly, and we're committed to do it. So if, unless, unless you all want to join in and go to a three-hour meetings, let me know. But Bill and I would like to share that responsibility with your blessings.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask, Councilman Haney, is this a permanent place on the board? I mean, if they requested that the city have somebody permanently placed on the board, is it one or two?
One.
So who would be the alternate? Who would be the primary?
I'd be the primary, and Bill would be the alternate.
Okay.
We'd probably, would, staff would recommend that we bring that back, we could even put something on consent calendar, just for formal adoption by council, if that's the pleasure of the council.
Yeah, because this is something that we all can attend, and I think a lot of us have attended. Sure. I don't know exactly how it's organized, but yeah, we will put it on the agenda and bring it back. Susan, did you have...
Well, I've, I've missed several water meetings, in part because on, I'm, you know, I'm on the Complete Streets Committee, and in addition, we've been meeting on Thursdays with the Ojai Valley Bicycle Coalition, the Ojai Valley Green Coalition, to move the, the, the plans for Ojai Avenue forward. And I, I'm, I'll have more to say about that at a future meeting, but I do want to say that, got some interesting news this week, that there's a bill being introduced to, so that state highways that run through local communities are safe and usable by transit riders, pedestrians, and cyclists. In other words, there's a bill that recognizes that many of these highways go in front of schools, through shop, you know, the situation that we have in Ojai, and they should be handled differently. So if that bill passes, that's one more way that we can have a lot more clout to do some good design work on Ojai Avenue. Some new, some more, some improved bicycle, bicycle pedestrian infrastructure.
I have one more comment to that. Suzie, can you also check and see on the Complete Streets? I'm not sure, is there, is there anything budgeted to actually do traffic studies regarding if we're going to reconfigure the community streets, how we're going to go about it? So it's, if you're not aware of it, or if staff's not aware of it, maybe someone could come back to us and talk about that? Because it seems like traffic congestion is huge.
I'll, I'll bring that question up tomorrow, because we're meeting tomorrow.
It'd be, it'd be a great opportunity, if we're spending fun, if we're spending money on evaluating this, that a traffic study be a part of that.
We'll get an answer to that question.
Okay.
Yeah, and that brings up the whole issue of congestion on parking.
Yes, yes.
I don't know.
Yes, we're working on it.
I have just two items I wanted to, to raise. One, the, the infamous leaf blower issue, that this was referred back to staff, what, last October, I think, or in late September? And my understanding, Steve, is that there's, that Greg's got something going for a demonstration for alternatives?
That's correct. It would be March 14th at 6:00 PM, so it would be prior to the regular meeting that night at 7:00 o'clock, and he'll, he'll do it right at, right here at City Hall, on the, the porch right behind the council chambers. It's open to any member of the public, and it will be a demonstration, and there'll be an opportunity for folks to ask questions and give comments as well.
Is this like one product, or more than one product, or...
I think they're, I think they're looking to demonstrate multiple products.
Okay.
Will, will this be publicized?
Yes, yes. I believe a advertisement is running in this week, Sojai Valley News.
Great, wonderful.
Great, thank you. And the other item is, my understanding is Amber's working to try to find a weekend in March that, where the council can get together on a Saturday and start, you know, before we get into budget, to...
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
...take set priorities and discuss some of the, you know, protocols, and, you know, what we're going to try to get accomplished?
Yes, we are working on that date for you.
Okay.
I already RSVP'd.
So I had a question on that. So the, when the term retreat comes to me, retreat is something that we do privately, and we go somewhere and, and discuss. So what I've heard, when I read the email tonight, it was a public retreat. So I think we need to call it that, that, because I had a little confused...
I haven't used the term retreat, but I...
Yeah, because I was confused going, "Okay, why don't we just do it here like we normally do it, but if we're going to do it on a Saturday, that's fine with me, too."
Yeah, and we can do it here on a Saturday.
You certainly can.
A lot of times organizations, they go to it, yeah, right, they go to a different venue. I don't know that that's necessary.
It would be nice.
The idea was that, it would be nice, there's a place you'd like to go.
Yeah, somewhere nice, and I can give, I can give you 10 minutes of yoga.
Mr....
My, my interest is in us getting things kind of, sort of, in the record, one of the candidates, who shall remain named, was during the last election, made a really good point during the debate. If we have more than, you know, say, two or three top priorities, we don't have top priorities.
Right.
And so we need to take a look at what we need to focus on, and that doesn't mean we can't do everything else, too, if we get to it, but, and then...
So are you and, and Steve going to get together and try and formulate some type of an agenda?
Right.
Based on the past, but, you know, to our past Councilman Savaro, he had, he really championed a priority list of, of issues and concerns facing the community, and how we were going to deal with them, and creating these. Maybe we start from that and share that with, with Mayor Johnston.
Certainly can share that with...
And then, like I said, because I'd like to see an agenda as to what we're going to talk about. Doesn't necessarily to be that priority is actually how you envision it, but it'd be...
No, I'm not even, I'm not even coming up necessarily with priorities, I just think that, you know, you know, setting other than the formal business meeting, for us to sit down and talk about where we're going and what we're doing, the kind of workload the staff has, some of the kind of endemic issues that face the, the, the... issues that face the staff and the procedures, the service to the public, is that kind of a conversation. We, you know, not necessarily to make any decisions, but to have the conversation. Anyway, okay, good.
And if I could just, for the record, make it abundantly clear that any meeting of the city council would need to be within the city limits, it would need to be publicly noticed, and the publicly accessible, and the public would be able to be there, and they would certainly be able to be there at the meeting.
And they'd have the ability to provide public comment on any items on the agenda.
Correct.
You know, while we're thinking about this, I know I've been to a couple, we all have been to a couple of these public meetings, and it's interesting, when I was at the one for the Recreation Center, the architect had us all individually go to different tables, and then collectively pick a leader and come back. I think it would be an interesting format for the council to maybe think about it that way, that each of us go chair a circle, be more intimate with the community, and then come back and actually talk about what we discovered via the community, and then have an open discussion with it. I think it'd be interesting to see how that might work.
Yeah, the last, the last one that we had, similar to this, we held it at the Women's Center, or the Women's Club, and we had a facilitator that worked out really well. We got the mission statement for the city out of it and some things like that, but it did work out really well, and I can't remember who the facilitator was. It was somebody local, and it worked out. It worked out very well. However, there weren't very many people from the public there. There might have been a half a dozen, and that was it. What I'm hearing are sort of two different kinds of processes. One is sort of a stakeholders' meeting type of thing where you go through all of that. The other is sort of a team-building cultural, corporate cultural shift amongst us folks who are trying to lead the community, and the public, obviously, under the Brown Act, you know, they are welcome to attend. Most of them probably would find it boring, but there would be some people who would like to attend, but they wouldn't be necessarily participants, but under the Brown Act, they would have the right to make comments to us. But the purpose, at least what I'm suggesting we do, is us to get to know each other more in a setting that allows us to explore what are the issues that we're faced with, both at the staff level and at the council level, and where do we go? You know, things like, you know, we've got general plan, we've got lots of things to talk about. We're not going to get it all done on a Saturday, but at least if we could kind of agree on which ones we want to focus on, then maybe to hold some stakeholder meetings, they would be part of that process in the future.
I guess my take on it was, it's grassroots effort in building a consensus on policy and priorities from the bottom up rather than from the top down, because I think there's a lot of times that we sit up here and are dictating to the community versus the community having the opportunity to come to us publicly and say, "Hey, these are our priorities." So that's where I was trying to come from.
Right, and I'm just saying, I think those are two different processes, and I think they both have merit. One takes a lot more organizing, and as you say, you really do need a facilitator for a big meeting, but if we had the top administrators in the city and the council, the city attorney just sitting down and kind of going through things, maybe from saying, you have lunch brought in 9:00 to 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon and see what we can come up with.
Right, I'm for it.
And one of the things may be exactly what you're talking about. Let's have a public meeting. Okay, is there anything else that we want to talk? I just have one other question. Is there any update on the, is it this week that we have the appeal to the supervisors?
I was actually going to mention that. Yeah, it's actually, it's set for Tuesday, March 7th at 1:30 PM, and that is before the Board of Supervisors at the County Government Center in Ventura.
And that's the appeal on the school, the trucks?
The Ojai Quarry.
Right.
Right, 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 the issue with the trucks, right. And we are coordinating with the school district and Mr. Shapiro.
Okay, thank you. There's nothing further. Thank you guys for hanging out with us. Meeting stands adjourned.